At this time, dear only Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together. Father, we come tonight with so many things that confuse us and things that we can't understand and we can take comfort in knowing that if we look to you that you will walk us through the difficult days in our lives, the days that we have been through, the days that we will continue to work through and try to make our lives more suitable for you and to enhance the lives of others. And you know, God, when we just disagree with each other, there's no artificial intelligence of any kind that can be anywhere near to sitting down and talking face to face with two individuals or however many it may be, and everybody trying to understand the other person's perspective and you just walk away and feeling like you've accomplished something and life goes on. So we ask that you would continue to give us patience, give us guidance, give us wisdom, and continue to protect us in the days ahead. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we need to adopt the business agenda. Someone, go ahead. I make a motion that we adopt the business agenda stated. Motion by Councilman Bill and the second by Councilman Stainback. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The agenda will be approved as is presented. Item four is special recognition. I would like to call on Fire Chief Patrick to make a presentation for the Fire Department. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, thank you.
I guess I'm impersonating a firefighter today, so we just...
You look the part, so go ahead.
Oh, okay. At least I look like I'm doing what I'm doing right. So, you know, before I left and retired, we had a few things that we wanted to, a few things that have kind of been put off due to different things, and one of those were recognize some of our individuals. One who had, we had just hired back back in the spring, and then we got a couple that were actually promoted over the last year. So I'm gonna call them up here in just a minute. And guys, if you'll come up as I call you and just stand right here facing the crowd. Firefighter Dylan Clark. We also had engineer Jared Wood that was supposed to be here tonight, but his wife, he and his wife just had a baby boy last week, so he was unable to make it tonight, which I think we all understand that. So engineer Vincent Molicon. And Fire Marshal Kenneth Hollowell. So we'll start here with Mr. Clark. Dylan is the son of Mr. and Ms. Jimmy Clark of Roanoke Rapids. Dylan began his fire service career at the Gaston Fire Department, which is just right across the river here, at age of 18. There he volunteered and took advantage of the classes that he was able to get and was certified firefighter two, rescue technician, along with his emergency medical technician. Dylan originally came to work with us in 2019 where he had served for about three years with us, and he left us for a brief spell, but this spring he came back and we were more than grateful to have him back with us. Tonight, I would like to ask his mother, Kathy Clark, if you would step forward, please. She will be placing his badge on. Dylan currently is assigned to C shift where he serves as firefighter at Station One. Next, we have Vincent Molicon. Vincent is the husband of Ms. Taylor Molicon and father of two kids, Grayson and Madison. Vincent came to us from Halifax Fire Department where he had served as a volunteer for 13 years. Vincent's currently served as certified as firefighter two, medical responder, and most recently, he just obtained his driver operator pumps and aerials. Tonight, we're recognizing Vincent for his most recent promotion to engineer. He is currently assigned to B shift at Station Two where he has assigned the engineer for engine 142, which is our second newest truck, I guess you could say. Tonight, if I could ask Ms. Taylor Molicon to step forward, please. She will be placing his badge on. And finally, we have Mr. Kenneth Hollowell. Kenneth is the husband of Ms. Sonia Hollowell and the father of Bryson, Kaylee, and Natalie. Kenneth has been with the Roanoke Rapids Fire Department since 2001, where he has also served multiple roles within our department over the years. He is also a 25-year veteran of the Davie Fire Department. Kenneth is certified in course firefighter one and two, rescue tech. He has his EMT, state certified EMT, inspector amongst other things. Tonight, we're here to recognize his most recent accomplishment, which is his fire inspector three certification. He obtained this back earlier this year. This is a three-year process, so this is not, you know, a couple months you go and take classes or whatever. This is you take your level one, you have to wait about a year, then you take your level two, and then you have to wait a year. So this is a pretty big accomplishment for him. Kenneth has been serving as our deputy fire marshal, and tonight we're recognizing him for his most recent promotion to fire marshal. If I could ask Mr. Bryson Hollowell, Kenneth's son, to step forward, he will be placing his badge tonight. We can give these gentlemen a round of applause. Thank you, guys. So I have one more thing. We've also got tonight to recognize a few gentlemen for a life save. What we typically do is when our guys go to a medical call, if they get there to patients unresponsive, not breathing, no pulse rate, you know, of course, they're gonna start CPR and start applying lifesaving measures. So tonight, we're recognizing two gentlemen for a save, which they done out on Premier Boulevard area earlier last spring. And what our rules are basically for receiving this is they have to be delivered to the hospital with a pulse breathing. So tonight, I would ask Mr. Christopher Boykin. And we also have Mr. Kenneth Sam Allen, which he wasn't able to make it tonight. I think he's, he wasn't able to make it. He's got some kids that are not feeling well tonight. So I'm gonna read what's on this certificate accommodation. This certificate is presented to Christopher Boykin for his act of heroism, lifesaving, which occurred in March of 2025 while serving as a firefighter for the city of Roanoke Rapids. On this date, you responded to a call of a citizen that had collapsed in the parking lot of a commercial business. You, along with your fellow fire engineer and Halifax County EMS personnel assessed the patient immediately began CPR. After several minutes of performing lifesaving AED shock and CPR, the victim was transferred over to emergency personnel with a pulse and breathing. This commendation is bestowed upon you for an act performed in the line of duty, which through your knowledge of lifesaving skills and prompt alert action resulted in saving a life. Presented this 16th day of September 2025. Thank you.
All right. Now it's Jason's turn to be recognized. Jason came to work for the city of Roanoke Rapids Fire Department on April the first of 1997, and as we can do the math, that is just over 28 years ago. Combined with this sick time, he was qualified for a full retirement benefit and has retired from the city of Roanoke Rapids effective September the first of this year. While it's only been a couple weeks, Jason's absence has already been, is already felt is lost, but we still know that he's gonna be around and help us out. One of the things I just want to say is that I've had the privilege of sitting on the interview committee when I was in a different role with the city, but when he was going for the chief selection process. And he lives, breathes, and the fire service is in his DNA. I think I even said that instead of an umbilical cord, I think he had a fire hose attached to his mom. So another thing I want to say is that Jason has made a difference in my own life personally as well. In my first few months as city manager, I went to an event that they had at a church, and he was giving some safety tips and things like that. And I'd always known, hey, don't leave the house with the dryer on, you know, your clothes dryer, you know, it's a risk of fire. And so he's in there in the church saying, don't leave your washer or your dryer running. And I'm like, really? You know? And he's, I asked him, I said, well, how many, what is the ratio of, you know, washers or dryers? He says, about 50/50. So in four years now, I have not left the house with the dryer nor the washer running and have had that concern. And so it's things like that that you remember and take with you, even as much as the oven push-pull that my kids continue to use on a regular basis that they have picked up from attending various fire department events and community service activities. While this is a small token of our appreciation, the city extends to you a plaque with a clock presented to Jason Dwayne Patrick in recognition of distinguished and dedicated service to the city of Roanoke Rapids for your tenure from April the first of 1997 until August the 31st of 2025. The mayor and the city council of Roanoke Rapids and our staff present this to you, and we thank you for your service. I realize you're gonna put this in a special place and think about us every day. In addition to the plaque, in accordance with North Carolina general statutes 160A-294.1 honoring deceased or retired firefighters, the Fire Department established by municipality may, in the discretion of the governing body of the municipality, award a retiring firefighter, upon request, a fire helmet of the retiring firefighter at a price determined in a manner authorized by the governing body. The price may be less than the fair market value of the helmet, and the sum of $1, the consideration of the sum of $1 has been received as required in accordance with the statute, and that has been paid. And so... Now we present Jason with his helmet, and also he's wearing his badge, though, so his helmet and badge are his now to keep as souvenirs for his 30 years of qualified service to the city of Roanoke Rapids.
Chief Faschek, you wanna say a few words?
And while he's thinking about it, after he concludes, we will need a motion and a vote of the council for the consideration to award retired Chief Patrick with his helmet and badge.
I just, I just thank the city for the opportunity to serve. It's tough. I'm 48 years old, and I've been here 28 years, so I've been here over half my life. And so I've enjoyed it. I've worked with some great people, not only in the Fire Department, but some of you that are up here. I've worked alongside of you on the streets, you know, police officers, firefighters. And, you know, it's been some tough times for everybody, but I think overall, the city is, we've done a great job. The city's done a good job. We've had some struggles and continue to have struggles, but that's life, right? You know, Chief Coggins used to always say it was peaks and valleys, and that's what it's all about. But it's what you do in those valleys is what makes the difference at the end. And so I just thank y'all for the opportunity, and, you know, I'm here, as I told Chief, I mean, Ms. Trannam, anything I can do to help the city, I'm still here. The guys at the Fire Department know it as well. So thank y'all again for recognizing me, and I appreciate it. And if there's anything I can do for any of you personally or for the city, please reach out.
We thank you for your service, and just from the council and everybody here, we wish you many, many years of enjoyable retirement and whatever you seek out to do in your next stage of your life.
I might start coming to Oscars early in the morning, too.
No later than 5:00.
I might catch a ride with somebody up there, you know?
Okay. We'll have to see if we're gonna take you in, you know? You come on probation.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you again for your service.
Thank y'all.
Nobody signed up public?
Mayor, we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to consider a motion to award former Chief Jason Patrick his helmet and badge for, and in consideration of the sum of $1 received as required by North Carolina general statute 168-294.1.
Okay, motion on the floor by Councilman Jackson. Do you hear second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bryant. Any more discussion? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion will be approved. Now, nobody signed up, okay. Now we need a motion for the September 2nd regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion to approve the September 2nd 25 regular city council minutes as drafted.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Stainback, second by Mr. Bill. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The minutes would be approved, and we move on to council appointments, reappointments. And for that, I call on Ms. Story, our clerk.
Not on, sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council and citizens. The terms for William Muller and Wilma White on the senior center advisory committee expired August 2nd. I contacted both Mr. Muller and Ms. White, and they're willing to continue serving on the committee. They have both served the maximum number of two consecutive terms allowed by the city policy, but city council has authority to waive this section of the policy and has done so in the past. City council took a ballot vote earlier, and they both received a unanimous vote to be reappointed. Therefore, I respectfully request city council consider a motion to waive the city policy for William Muller and Wilma White and reappoint them to the senior center advisory committee.
Okay. Do we hear a motion for these two individuals to be reappointed?
Mr. Mayor, I'm having a motion to waive the city policy for Mr. Muller and Ms. White and reappoint them to the senior center advisory committee.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Stainback. Do you hear second? Second by Mr. Jackson. Any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those two individuals would be reappointed to their committees.
Right. Thank you, council. And I would like to make a note that we do have some vacancies on this committee, so if anybody lives on the city limits and would like to serve, please reach out and contact me. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Good evening, Mayor and council and citizens. Tonight, I bring before you some recent changes to the FEMA flood insurance rate map, also known as the FIRM. Its implications for our community's floodplain management regulations. These updates are effective as of September 19th, 2025, so it's crucial for our maintaining our community's eligibility in the National Flood Insurance Program, also identified as NFIP, and ensuring effective flood risk management. The purpose of tonight's meeting and due to our land use ordinance regulations and general statutes for legislative decisions regarding text amendments, we do have some requirements that we have to complete this evening. Some of those are to open and conduct a public hearing in regard to these text amendment changes, to receive comments from citizens, to close the public hearing, and then you must deliberate on various amendments as desired and following a motion and a vote. Some of the key changes and requirements were to the flood insurance study report and the revised FIRM panel, which will establish base flood elevations and delineate special flood hazard areas. These updates aim to better reflect current flood risks. All requisite standards specified under 44 CF4 Part 60.3D must be integrated into our local regulations. This can be achieved by adopting or amending legally enforceable regulations to comply with these standards. They outline the floodplain management and minimize flood risk due to new developments. To preserve the NFIP eligibility, we must incorporate revised standards into local ordinances. So we must amend the existing regulations or adopt new ones where necessary, and ensure compliance with or exceeds state and local requirements. A summary of the ordinance updates include enhanced standards for areas with base flood elevations but without established floodways or non-encroachment areas, ensuring that no development increases the water surface elevation of the base flood. Specifications for standards applicable to floodways and non-encroachment areas that focus on minimizing potential hazards from floodwaters, and guidelines for floodproofing methods, structure and evaluation to secure utilities and facilities from flood risks. To maintain the FIRM, a summary of MAP actions has been provided to reflect on previous letters of MAP changes. This will ensure continuous documentation and validation of MAP modifications for accurate floodplain management. Noncompliance would lead to NFIP suspension affecting federal flood insurance access with subsequent impacts on mortgages and property values. Adhering to these updates ensures our community remains resilient against flood risk and has access to federal aid. It's critical to review and adjust our floodplain management ordinances to align with the new FIRM and NFIP standards properly. Coordination with relevant state and federal bodies will be maintained to ensure seamless transition. Some items for you to review is the consistency with the land use plan. The following statements from the city's comprehensive plan reflect the city's interest in maintaining compliance with applicable state legislation as the city adopts appropriate development standards for the community, to continue to be actively involved in the NFIP community rating system, and to focus planning for open space corridors, greenways, and other low-intensity uses on areas within the 100-year floodplain. Staff does recommend approval of the proposed text amendments. Tonight, your required action are to consider an adoption of statement of consistency and consider adoption of ordinance number 2025.30 approving the proposed text amendments. Subject to your questions, this does conclude my report for this evening. It would also be appropriate to open the floor for public comment.
Okay, so at this time, I would declare that the public hearing would be open. Any citizens that are here that would like to speak for or against this action that we're considering undertaking can come forward and speak at the podium at this time. If there's no one who wishes to speak, I would declare at this time that the public hearing would be closed. Then we would need to move on to adopt a statement of consistency.
Correct.
Which you have listed for us.
Yes.
So at this time, we would need a motion and a vote on consider adoption of the statement of consistency prepared by the staff.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Ms. Bryant.
I'll make the motion to consider adoption of the statement of consistency as prepared by the staff.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Bryant. Is there a second by Mr. Stainback? Any more discussion? Signify by saying, any more discussion? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That item will be approved. Then you have item number two, consider adoption of the ordinance number 2025.30.
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion to adopt ordinance number 2025.30 approving the proposed text amendments related to FEMA MAP updates and compliance with the NFIP standards.
Second. Okay, motion by Mr. Stainback, a second by Mr. Bill. Is there any more discussion on that matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion would also be carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Wiggins?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members. I'm here before you for two ordinances for your consideration. The first is going to be consideration for declaring the use of, use of Roanoke Avenue for slow-moving traffic for Christmas on the avenue. North Carolina DOT has requested the city acquire a permit for the use of Roanoke Avenue to have its hayrides during the city's annual Christmas on the avenue scheduled for Friday, December 5th, 2025, from 5:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. Ordinance 2025.31 is attached for your review and your consideration. If I may do the second and read that one as well?
We need a motion to approve that first.
First one, okay.
Okay. On the 2025.31, we need a motion to approve that.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025.31 declaring use of a road for slow-moving traffic associated with Christmas on the avenue on December the 5th, 2025.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bill. Do you hear second? Second by Mr. Jackson. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion would be carried. Now we move on to item two.
Yes, sir. The second is consideration for ordinance declaring a temporary road closure for the Christmas parade. Specifically, North Carolina DOT has made changes regarding closures of state roads for special events. It is necessary to adopt an ordinance in order to temporarily close Roanoke Avenue, which is NC 48, for the Roanoke Rapids Christmas Parade on December 7th, 2025. Ordinance number 2025.32 has been prepared for your review and consideration, which must be approved for North Carolina DOT, it must be provided to North Carolina DOT prior to the parade.
All right. Do we hear such a motion as Chief is asking? All right. Do we hear such a motion as Chief is asking?
Mayor?
I think Mr. Strickland.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025.32 declaring a temporary road closure for the Christmas parade on December 7th, 2025.
Okay, do we hear second to the motion?
Second.
Ms. Bryant, any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those know that motion would also be approved. Thank you, sir. Finance Director, Ms. Johnson?
So the council approved the new SRO agreement with this Roanoke Rapids graded school district, and with that agreement, we need to purchase four Viper radios in which the school system will reimburse us 50% of that. So I'd like to ask you to adopt budget amendment 2025.33 in the amount of $17,593.50 for the radios, and we'll get half of that back.
Anybody on the council have any questions about this before we call for a motion? There being none, call for a motion for approval?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt budget amendment ordinance number 2025.33 in the amount of $17,593.50 for Viper radios for SRO agreement.
Okay, the motion is by Mayor Pro Tim Bryant. Do you hear second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bell. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, no, motion will be approved. All right, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Trainum, Economic Development Grant Program?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. During the last couple meetings and some correspondence with you, we've given you notice that the Halifax County Business Horizons is offering local economic development grants to municipalities within Halifax County, including Halifax County itself as an eligible applicant. There are certain criteria that proposed projects must meet in addition to a deadline where projects must be completed no later than, excuse me, April the 30th, 2026, or about six months from the award date. Grants range from $15,000 to $50,000, and they must have projects that support and strengthen your community's economic vitality through site development, building improvements, business district improvements, and other eligible activities. The city of Roanoke Rapids proposes a project called the Main Street District Safety and Vibrancy Initiative, which is intended to strengthen public safety and encourage economic vitality in the Main Street District, which our Main Street District is rather large. We have the second-largest historic district in the state according to the latest news that we've held that in place, and so our Main Street District does correspond with that historic district as well. I am going to call upon our Main Street Director to offer a little bit more detail on the proposed project, but the proposed project for funding includes four emergency slash community information towers. You've probably seen them at different, either within parking lots or usually you see them in universities or other public places. Also, a geo-targeted media campaign for downtown safety and commerce, as well as a mini matching grant program for seven businesses to fund visible improvements that would be impactful in their appearance for their facades. I would like to recognize again, Main Street Director Ashley Thomas and also our Police Chief Wiggins for their collaborative work on this, and also with our Public Works Director Chalker, who has offered to do some in-kind labor to help see these through if approved for funding. And as part of, as a condition of a grant application, which the grant application is due by October the 1st, a resolution or a letter of support is required by the governing board. Since we do not meet again formally until October the 7th, we present to you this project for funding tonight, and subject to your approval and consent, we would move forward with this and ask your adoption of Resolution 2025.09. So for now, I'm going to turn it over to Main Street Director Thomas to give you a little bit more information about the proposed project.
Thank you so much. So good evening, Mayor, Council members, and of course, our citizens. I'd like to provide an overview of the Horizon proposal, how it will directly support the Main Street District. This grant request does have three parts. First is the Emergency and Community Information Towers, where we would propose $40,000. It's the largest portion of this request, and it's, these towers will enhance communication and safety. They feature a dual button system. One is for 911 communication, and one is an info line. The info line is a voicemail-based call system where visitors, community members, and the like can access information about local resources, events, and updates, as well as a sponsored message from Main Street businesses and organizations. These towers will enhance both public safety and community engagement. Upon approval, let's see, the placement will be finalized in coordination with Main Street, law enforcement, and public works to ensure optimal coverage and accessibility. Together, these towers will improve public safety, create easier access to city updates, and strengthen visitor experience in our Main Street District. The second portion of the proposal is that geo-targeted marketing, which we are proposing for $3,000. Now, this will fund a digital outreach that specifically targets those folks who are already in or near Roanoke Rapids. It's really just a cost-effective way to promote our businesses, events, and Main Street opportunities to both residents and visitors at the right time and the right place. Now, data was provided to us by the North Carolina Department of Commerce via the platform flacer.ai, and that shows that approximately 90,000 unique visitors pass through the Main Street District each month. So geo-targeting would allow us to send targeted information to their devices promoting business partners and community safety. And then lastly, number three, that was the mini facade grant for $7,000. Now, this program would provide $1,000 matching grants. It's a one-to-one match to seven businesses and property owners for small-scale exterior improvements. So with this match, each project could total $2,000 or more if the business chooses to invest more. So examples would be fresh painting signage, awning repair, window and door enhancements, lighting for storefronts. So these improvements collectively can make a big impact by boosting curvaceous, supporting local pride, and of course, encouraging private investment in that town. So in summary, this is $50,000 for the Horizons proposal. It provides safety, communication, marketing, and of course, the immediate improvements through the side ramps.
Where the tower was, would they be located in that area? I mean, can you tell me a little bit more?
Okay, so the placement would be in the Main Street District. Right now, we are looking at several different spaces. I'm working directly with public works and of course, law enforcement to determine where they would be best positioned so that we could have the most impact. So some will potentially be on property that, such as the library or maybe in the urban green space, but once we move forward with the proposal, we'll be able to get more information on exactly where, but it will be spaced out through the district.
And what's the difference in having that available versus if you have an emergency, like somebody's assaulting you, or you're having a heart attack, or calling 911 versus using this?
Well, one of the things is that, so that button, as soon as they press it, they will be connected to 911 services, and it also will act almost as a deterrent for crime as well. So if you can imagine, if you are in a neighborhood and there's a police car, you know, most folks, they go ahead and they hit on the brakes. They don't speed there. So having these towers also will have that secondary effect as well.
Do you have to be in contact with the tower to make that connection, like press a button?
Yes.
Okay.
And they do include a blue light. We haven't committed to a specific product through a specific vendor yet, but we've looked at, there's been some research on various vendors. They usually include the blue light on top as well. That's typically on most of the time. They have the options for adding cameras to them, but seeing those, if you go in public places, especially out of town, and when you see those, it's actually a, it does create an environment that, of safety and reassurance. We know at any given time, especially, like we've talked about even like down towards the Canal Museum, having one, like if you're on the Canal Trail and you just never know. And while many of us have a cellular device on us at any time, you never know when you're going to drop that, or in the case of an emergency, that phone may not be as accessible in certain circumstances. But we feel like this is a viable project that meets the criteria of the grant award. At this point in time, we've solicited other ideas. Some ideas that have come up either don't meet the criteria or exceed the available funding. So the next step here tonight would be for council to approve the resolution supporting the application. From there, we turn in the application to Halifax Horizons, and during its board meeting on October the 8th, they will review applications. They may choose to fund part of the application. They may choose to fund none of it. So, but I feel like we have a strong proposal that's been developed by our staff and one that can be achieved in the six-month timeframe.
And only $7,000, was that $1,000 for seven businesses, right?
Yes, sir.
Do they have to match?
Yes, sir.
Match dollar for dollar?
How do you determine which seven that'll be? Do they apply for it, or?
They'll be application process.
And until we know whether or not the funding has been approved, well, first, we want council to approve the project that's been proposed, and secondly, if our application is approved, then we can move forward to the next step. We can even bring these matching grant requests to council for their approval, but we would want to make sure that it's a fair and equitable, being able to cost share and make those determinations based on specific criteria.
If the project is approved, would the council have any input into where the tower would be spaced and located?
We would be glad to include you.
I mean, this is my thought. Maybe have four, I think. Did you say something about four?
Four.
We have four. Logically, you think two uptown, two downtown. With downtown, there's not a lot of traffic downtown. So, okay, would you put all four of them uptown, where we don't have, seem to have as much need for it, lack of a better word. So I'm just thinking that would be something that we probably would want to consider strategic placement on.
Right, and we're considering things as far as utility location, the connectivity. Installation is pretty basic as far as what we can tell, but you want to try to strive for areas where there's already existing pedestrian foot traffic. For example, this particular block area, we have a post office. We have several events that take place at our Centennial Park and so forth. So there's potentially an idea, we're looking at properties that the city owns first, rather than having to make agreement with any private owners, but if approved, we feel like this also could be something that other, where this would be a start to other additional safety enhancements, just a starting point for that. But you think down by the Canal Trail, Canal Museum, there's a lot of people who use that on foot on a regular basis. And then, you know, we've talked about some various areas. They could be parking lots and so forth, but we would be pleased to encourage the council to participate in those recommendations.
Do you know if we liked them and they felt like they were doing some good, can you add additional towers into this program?
Yeah.
Okay, I like that.
Mr. Mayor, we ready for a motion?
Yes, sir, I think so.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025.09 supporting an application for a grant from Halifax County Business Horizons.
Okay, the motion on the floor is from Mr. Steinbach. Do you hear second to the motion? That was by who?
Jackson.
Mr. Jackson. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion will be approved. Thank you all. I believe you have the next one, Ms. Trainum, too.
All right. The action that's requested for your consideration this evening is a preliminary step. Back in the summer of 2024, we were approached by the Players League, a gentleman named Alec Allred, who's the president and CEO of that organization, and that organization has several baseball leagues within its corporation. One of the things that has come up in the summer leagues that they host are for college players. It's a collegiate-level woodbat league. They approached the city, and they've been very interested in the last couple years in establishing a team in the Roanoke Rapids area due to the location. The Players League has seven of these collegiate leagues across multiple states, and the league that is part of our area is called the Old North State League, or ONSL. As you, and there's four divisions within the ONSL, and our area is part of the Tidewater Division. If the city were to participate in hosting a team, the Tidewater Division includes a team from Newburn, Edenton, Elizabeth City, and I think I mentioned Tarboro, and possibly, of course, Roanoke Rapids. One of the main requirements is that we needed to be able to accommodate 30 days within about a 90-day timeframe between May 15th and August the 15th for joint use of Doyle Field, which is located behind the Aquatic Center. The Parks and Recreation staff looked at the calendar and determined that it is possible that we could get 30 days in. That doesn't mean that the baseball team would need all 30, but the 30 would be representative of certain needs, usually about half of that time maybe for home baseball games, and other dates may be for clinics or instructional times, camps, things like that that could be offered to the community as well. The first step in bringing a collegiate team to Roanoke Rapids would be the development of a lease agreement where we would develop, the city would propose a lease to the Players League with certain terms that would be considered for their use in establishing a team here, and then also for them to move forward with the next step after that, which would be to find a team owner, which would be under a franchise agreement through the Players League organization. The time is of the essence in some ways because the Players League generally releases their ONSL summer league schedule by late October, and so if subject to council's guidance tonight, if directed, we would move forward with drafting a lease to come back to council on October the 7th during your regular meeting to request approval of it. This would be an initial lease until a team owner is developed, but the long-term option is requested no more than nine years, but no less than five years initially. I have reviewed several different leases that are offered at various municipalities within their leagues. There's various scales of charges depending on the types of events, and the majority of communities have found that this type of agreement has provided for opportunities to have field and facility improvements through shared cost or other fundraising opportunities as well. And in fact, it also increases visitors to our area. As I mentioned, the league teams with Tarboro, Elizabeth City, Newburn, Edenton are at most a couple, two to three hours away, and so hosting games here would bring visitors to Roanoke Rapids. The college or the players themselves are not paid. They are current players on collegiate teams. The key thing here that we want to focus on as well is a joint use of Doyle Field. Doyle Field is currently home to the Roanoke Rapids High School as well as the Youth Baseball League for 13, 14, 15-year-olds. I have had conversations with representatives from the Youth Baseball Association who would have expressed interest in learning more. Their biggest concern, they don't want to see their youth age groups get, you take the backseat or to... the backseat or to be forced out of it, and that said, that is not the intended goal here. The intended goal here is to provide an opportunity for joint use, and joint use appears to be common throughout that. So our local teams will still have the prior, have use through this, and also if approved, we would know which dates, well in advance of their seasons, that would be possible game opportunities. The games themselves, I think you told me that no more than, the entry fees are no more than $10. Most of the time, it's $5, $6, $7, $8. And then they make their revenues off of concessions and marketing materials, t-shirts, hats, promotional items. If the city is interested in us moving forward to the first step of drafting a lease, I found it appropriate to bring this before the city council to give us some direction before we go too far into it. What I'd like to offer as well is a meeting with the Mr. Allred of the Players League as well, subject to your interest. But it is a level effort to get to a draft lease between now and your meeting on October the 7th. With that being said, I would like to have some guidance from council in the form of a motion to direct city manager, city administration to move forward with a draft lease agreement for Doyle Field. Again, we feel like this partnership has the potential to be mutually beneficial to all involved, and as well as it gives our local youth. And see, the, this program is designed because it wants to motivate the youth of our community to want to go to college and be able to play and come back home and play on their home fields again. And again, just want to emphasize the joint use of the field with our other users of it. Subject to any questions you may have, just like for, the requested action is to authorize the city manager to negotiate a lease with Alec Allred of the Players League for the joint use of Doyle Field and to come back and present that to you for consideration on October the 7th.
Got any questions for the city manager?
And I'll, I'm sorry, I will add, just because you authorize us to move forward with it tonight does not mean you have to approve a lease as it comes forward. I just want, there's only a few weeks in between now and then, and our staff will need to dedicate some time into that development. And so if you're not, if it's not the consensus of the council tonight to, if you don't have any interest in moving forward, then we will just revisit this in the future if it comes up again.
I have a question.
Ms. Bryant.
The joint use agreement that, are they willing to pay us anything for using?
That's a great question, yes. One of the things they said they prefer is what I've seen in different situations, I've seen where maybe $3,000 for a season and then plus, this is just an example, and then plus certain fees for whether it's a game, a doubleheader game, a clinic, and that type of thing. We could also put in their charges for if the city, it's a negotiation tool at this point. And what I would, if, if the council directs us to move forward with this tonight, what I'd like to do is have meetings with the Baseball Association and the high school about their use of the field, as well as our Parks and Recreation Department staff who manage the field, and come up with a plan for how we'd like to see that. We can charge for, if, if the city is the one to help prep the field, that's something that we can offer. We can charge them for field, you know, the, the equipment, the, the line, the striping of the, of the infield, and so it is a tool, a negotiation tool that can be developed for a long-term commitment, but also with flexibility for offering it. And not only that, it doesn't mean, if we sign a long-term lease, it doesn't mean that we're guaranteed that for this certain amount of time. Our staff have found in research that there was at one point a, a long-term commitment in another jurisdiction, and after a couple of years, the team owner decided he wanted to go do something else, and the team dissolved, but they still owed the municipality for the number of years of, of, of rent in accordance with the lease for terminating it early. So there are several things, I'm sure we include the city attorney, of course, in this, but so there are, there's definitely opportunities to increase our revenues and also to cover, to make sure that we're not losing out. And I also want to mention, too, is that between the school district and the baseball league, they have done fundraisers and things to help pay for facility improvements there. And that's important to note that we want to preserve and make sure that it's, that the field remains viable for all.
Yeah, that was my concern, the prepping and clean up afterwards, and so that it can be used and not going to be another expense on the city.
And all of that can be borne to them, like they bring in their own umpires, they bring in their, and so again, it's a, it's an opportunity to get to the drawing board, and before, I don't, I don't want us to go through all this effort if it's, if it's not possible, so that's why action tonight is requested.
Would it be feasible to reach out to maybe one or two of the other teams and see if they would be willing to share any kind of revenue statement, P and L, you know, to see, like some of these questions Ms. Bryant was asking, you know, how much did they pay us, or how much do we have to pay? I don't think anybody's here, here on the council is, is looking to try to, you know, get a windfall of profit, but we don't want to get hooked into something that, you know, is, is a, is a loss for us every year, because I think, I'm, I'm in favor of it, I think it would be a good, I talked to a couple of people that had been involved with it in other cities, and it was a kind of more of a good social thing as much as it is a baseball game. So, but, but we, you know, I think we can go ahead, at least unless y'all disagree, go ahead and approve what you want for tonight, and we're not locked in to anything right yet, or to the attorney reviews, the lease and everything, so how do y'all feel?
Well, and whatever gets drafted is going to come back in front of you by the end on October 7th, so.
Okay. But I was under the impression when that gentleman talked to us a while back about the concessions and some of that stuff, we, we got some of that money, maybe, maybe I misunderstood it, but I don't know. But that's things we can find out later.
It's all, it's all, it's a customized lease, we can ask for what we want. The one thing that they did discourage was charging, for example, trying to get a dollar per ticket sale. They said that, you know, they make their money off of concessions, which you have to sell a lot of hot dogs and things like that to make some money, but, but the, you know, the concessions and then also the merchandise. And so it is a investment, and then also the next piece, if a, you know, if we get to the point where the council approves a lease, that's basically used as a marketing tool to help solicit a, a team owner to buy a franchise tag through them. Our part in that is not as active, but one of the other things that they've said is that they also involve the public in like naming of a team. There's, they consider that a, they want to generate public support, have online contest or naming contest for, you know, how you want to name the team. And so I'm sure there's some creativity around here that could come, that could come up with, but it, it is very community focused. Additionally, as far as housing of players, there's opportunities for host families to host a baseball player, and they said, you know, they'll, they can help you out with your yard, you know, they're usually willing to help out and do things in, in exchange for some, but it is a temporary time, and we are talking about, you know, college-age students playing baseball.
Okay. I think she said she needs the motion, we have one listed there, or somebody like to bring it before the board?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate a lease with Alec Allred, president and CEO of the Players League for joint use of Doyle Field, and present a draft lease for consideration by council. His next regularly scheduled meeting on October 7th, 2025.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bill, second by Mr. Jackson. Is any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. No, motion approved. Okay. Report?
Yes. Report presented to you tonight is summarizing a few brief activities here. As mentioned, we do have our next meeting next week on Tuesday, the 23rd. Let me know if you are still interested in attending. We have a meeting scheduled at TJ Davis with representatives from the Land and Water Conservation easement, to discuss our easements that are located within certain city properties and city parks concerning some of the things that they've noted in a annual report that, or annual inspection that was conducted last spring. And then also as a reminder, the HCIA meeting will be hosted by the Sanitary District on September the 24th. Coming up this weekend on Friday, a lot of activity will be around this, around the high school and the Main Street District as well. The high school homecoming will be held Friday, September the 19th. And then on Saturday, from 2:00 until 9:00 o'clock at Centennial Park, the Twilight Festival will be held. Other activities are scheduled throughout the rest of the month that involve our city departments as well, such as the Safe Kids and the Cornhole Tournament, where the proceeds go to support the Christmas for Kids program. Looking into next month already, the Battle of the Badges Blood Drive will be held on Wednesday, October the 1st at Kirkwood. The police and the fire department will hold its second challenge to see who comes out on top. I have registered in advance, and so you can actually go online and make your appointment. Last year, they had one of the biggest turnouts in any blood drive history around here, and so at the end of it, you can choose whether you want to put in a red token or a blue token for police or fire. I put in a purple one last year. And then also, our staff have been very helpful with the activities at the Carolina Crossroads Amphitheater. They just had their second successful concert event on Friday night, or excuse me, this past Saturday night. And then on Friday, October 3rd, they'll host Lynyrd Skynyrd as a national act. Things going on within the city administration, one very significant activity is the kickoff of, with the actual, the real-time integration of our NEOGAF Human Resources Information System. It'll officially be implemented on Sunday, the 21st, with employees that will be checking in on a new program and abandoning our archaic ways of doing things. There's other benefits to this NEOGAF program that are underway, they're soon coming after that, but especially with employee performance management, onboarding, training, and so forth. This past week, our Human Resources Director conducted several training sessions with employees, and we find that it's going to be an adjustment, but a positive user experience. Majority of people now are doing many things on their phones, and so it's, is very user-intuitive device or software program. Effective October the 1st of 2025, a new state law, Session 2025-16, goes into effect, which requires that all applicants for positions with the city that work with children in any capacity to submit to a criminal history records check conducted by the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation, or the SBI. The city of Roanoke Rapids' practice is to run background checks on our employees, but anyone who has any capacity that may work with children will be required to undergo additional background through the SBI. This is a mandatory thing now through the state law, and again, it becomes effective for any offers of employment made on or after October the 1st. And the timing of this is also critical because you cannot require someone to have, undergo a SBI check prior to offering them a position. So you have to wait until you've checked all the boxes and you say, we want to offer you this position, as a condition upon it, you have to pass, you know, be cleared through this. This could have some time implications in hiring, we don't know yet, until it really starts kicking off, but we've made some adjustments in our city functions as far as for fingerprinting. Fingerprinting will be required, as well as consent form and any other additional information that state and national repositories of criminal histories may require. By law, each individual who undergoes this would have to, or would be allowed, has the right to review their own criminal history record and ensure that it's complete and accurate. The past Saturday, the Uvernet Canal 5K was held with a patriotic theme, celebrating the Americas 250 and Halifax Resolve. Increased attendance is noted with 109 participants in this year's race. We thank our Parks and Rec staff and the sponsors of that event, a successful event and a beautiful weekend for a run. Tomorrow, Representative from Don Davis's office will be available beginning at 10:00 in the morning at the Senior Center, and will be here until noon to take any questions or comments from any of our communities or any of our residents. And then also this week, starting tomorrow through the end of the week, our independent auditor will be in town to review the fiscal year '25 financial statements prior to the development and submittal of a report to the local government commission. One, a good point of news here is that site work is underway for the Emory Skate Park. MJ Price Construction has started removal of a portion of the existing tennis courts to accommodate space that, for the proposed skate park that has been, that will be realized primarily through fundraising and contributions by the city and other local grants. Online registration for Parks and Recreation programs is underway. We are, the city has kicked off the online registration and payment platform called RR Parks and Rec, recdesk.com, where you can sign up and manage your activities, you can lease, or excuse me, you can rent a facility, such as a park, or schedule yourself to play pickleball. But right now, they are receiving applications for youth basketball, and this is intended to help give some better access for especially working parents and do, and move away from the paper forms that we have previously been using. Instructions on how to use RecDusk are provided. I went in there yesterday and started my own, so just see how it works. But basically, you can, as a head of household, you can create your account and then add your family members to that, and it generates, you know, your, your age groups and things like that, and you have the enhancements to be able to know what is age-appropriate for individuals. And there's also, there's also a payment method that's allowed online as well. The things that you can do are, you know, register for various youth and athletic programs, reserve facilities, such as the new pickleball courts over at Rochelle Park, and then manage your account for you and your family members, and then find out information on current and upcoming programs. This is one of the goals and needs that had been expressed throughout many budget cycles, and we're excited to see this move forward. There's a flyer on the next page that talks about the instructions for youth basketball and also some other activities coming up. Parks and Rec Director Dottry has provided you with a stack of flyers of upcoming activities, but at the Senior Center on the 24th of September, they'll have a pickleball instruction. And then also in October, and this is a little preliminary, but there's several courses that are being offered at the senior, excuse me, at the public library about using the internet and online safety and as, and also smartphones. As we move into the digital age, or we're in the digital age, we're not, and we're fully and starting to embrace it, the level of skills and need are there, and so there are some courses being offered to help assist people with their digital literacy. And then also during the week of September the 25th is Taco Week, let's take a child outside. They'll have some activities centered at the Canal Museum as well. And then also provided for you there is an excerpt for our toddler activities at both the library and TJ Davis. Subject to your questions, that concludes my report for this evening.
Anybody have any questions of the city manager?
I'm pretty impressed with the automation to be able to register online kids out with that.
It's very helpful. I'll put it this way, as a working parent, you would think, especially someone who works for the city, and I'm speaking personally, but I have missed several deadlines because I just either don't get out enough, or I just have missed it, and I don't ask for any special treatment because a deadline is a deadline. And especially with basketball, typically the basketball deadline has been October the 31st, and so while they're the 31st, and so while they're preparing for trunk or treat, they'll also have a line of people coming to, to help pay and to submit their registrations. Now I can submit a registration at any time of day. It's a 24/7 access, and now that my information is already there, I don't have to re-enter it each time. So, I think that once, I think, once people go in and establish their account, and then they could also do things like their, their Parks and Rec, the TJ Davis access passes or Aquatics Center passes. Those are other types of things that can be accessed through this platform.
All right. Thank you for your reports. Anything else that needs to come for us tonight? There being none, all in favor?
Finance Director's report.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm sorry. I, I knew you'd already been up there. I thought we had finished it.
Okay. Last but not least, for August, year-to-date receipts was 259, 260,000. Year-to-date expenditures is 3.8 million, but don't panic. We still have not got our big tax distribution check yet. We did just receive July sales tax and July utility tax payments in September.
Excuse me, and I was going to ask you about that because I saw the ad valerian parent, ad valerian tax profit, and I saw that operating in the red, and I was, that because, as I said, not as much as the previous year this time, is that because we still haven't received?
Well, we haven't received any payments so far for that, yeah, yeah. And I, and I understand that the county had a little trouble with their system, so Doris Hawkins has been communicating with us, and we should see it pretty soon.
So, that should be eventually cleared once you go through?
Yes, yes. And it's always like that for July and August, because we pay all our upfront costs, like our insurance and workers' comp and all that stuff. So, it's, it's always like, oh, yeah, you spent all this money, but we haven't gotten any, but we're, we're okay, yeah. So, basically, we just got our, you know, solid base fees. Our interest is still doing very well, I feel like, each month. And so, you know, basically, like I said, you know, we're living off the city's cash management fund right now, but all of that will go back in there. We should be receiving our first allotment of our power bill in September also.
Just as a reminder, this is a report as of the close of August the 31st, and so in September is typically when we receive our first rounds of significant funding.
I know what jogged my memory. I was sitting here reading about the finance report and how far behind we were. That's what, that's what confused my judgment.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your report. Is there any, any additional questions? All right, thank you, ma'am. Any other business? Call for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Steinbach. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.